Okay, we will go ahead and get the meeting started. We're gonna review forty-two hundred, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, so, board recognizes that parents, that parent teachers do organizations are a valuable resource for the district. And so supports, and so supports their, um, taking that word out.
Do you wanna pay for copying it?
Yes, please.
And supports their formation and vitality, membership must-
I guess I'll move over here.
And then, schools support, uh, okay. Teacher and student organizations, so school support organizations may be involved to support and strengthen specific activities conducted in the school or district and must receive the approval from, approval of this school support to the board in order to be recognized. Okay, well, that's interesting, 'cause I don't think the board has ever been made aware of organizations that are within school buildings. Um, these organizations must be kept on file and, okay. Addressing other pertinent information that has been made aware. Alright, so I think I bring that up at the board meeting. School support organizations shall handle their own accounting and keep-in procedures and maintain their own separate accounts for income and expenditures. Annual financial reports that provide a full accounting of the financial dealings for the year shall be submitted to the board for review. Okay. Um, okay. Booster proposed plans, projects, or activities must be evaluated and- Okay, so this blue is from ISBA.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Booster proposed plans, projects, or activities must be evaluated and promoted in light of their stated contributions to the curricular as well as the extracurricular programs of the district. Okay, but by whom? Careful considerations begin to the total value of all students rather than to specific elements, it's just, okay. Submit to the superintendent, um, their targeted goals and objectives along with their fundraising plan for the next school year for review by the board. Should the goals and objectives of fundraising plans change during the school year, the superintendent is to be advised before any final revisions are made. Okay, so I guess what I'm curious about, 'cause none of this has ever happened, um, 'cause board never knows what the organizations are doing. I don't know.
I guess it should be sent out to all the organizations or teacher's schools to disseminate to organizations?
Yeah, because maybe, I mean, I guess the board needs to discuss this, does the board, um-
Right.
Want this?
Do you want it? No.
I don't.
Okay.
Because I just feel like, hello?
Hello, Charlie.
No, you're good. We just started-
I was later last time.
We just started-
One that I actually didn't wanna be late to.
Through forty-two hundred, have a seat.
You wanna pay for copy?
Well, I just wonder, I guess-
Maybe a list, like, I feel like that would be helpful if the board had a list.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's beneficial for the board to know what's going on within schools.
Yeah.
But I almost feel like this is like, let us micromanage. But I don't know that that's the intention, but the language makes me feel that way. Um, must abide by all district policies as well as the following. Must not use district's tax ID number. And see, we changed the language to support simply school support organizations because, um, it would bounce around.
Yeah, there's like different names for-
So this is just specific to booster organizations, which there are two, but why would, I mean, I would think that no organizations, school support organization could use a tax ID number for districts. But I don't know.
It would be bizarre if they used the district's tax ID number.
I, I would, that wouldn't be a thing, but- May not accept checks made out to the district, the district may not accept checks made out to the booster organization.
I suspect this stuff has happened in the past.
Maybe. Should not have a leadership role in the booster organization. Fundraising should not occur on district premises or during the school hours unless permission has been given by the superintendent. Annual or quarterly reports on income expenses and balance. You know, for some reason I have a feeling we talked about this and we removed it. I'm not positive, but, um, okay. This customer usually does not function such groups. To assess the improved activity, it's fine. Should be considering consideration. We are in the forty-two hundred. Okay, was a school adjunct group, is that a school support organization?
Where is it?
Right here. See, the blue language is ISBA language, and for some reason I thought we, I thought we already cruised through this, um-
This is the last draft, there's also on there the prior draft we did.
Okay.
Which doesn't have nearly as much.
Okay. This is why it's called adjunct groups. Okay, we're not gonna call it some adjunct group according to-
I was gonna say that's a bad-
Support organization. Director of support of school programs. Consulted, okay. Does that happen? I mean, like, if the PTA or PTO or PDU or whatever it is wants to purchase something for the school, they have to consult with the principal before they purchase anything to donate to the school?
I think that that's how it works.
That's how it works, okay.
One of my friends is like the VP at Twin Lakes at least.
Okay.
I know that they talk a ton with the principal, like, they wanted to do a fundraiser to, for playground equipment thing and they had to-
Okay.
Get that approved.
Okay.
Well, I mean, fundraiser, yes, you have to get approved. I'm just trying to remember, like, 'cause Spirit Lake does the self-awareness pause. And the PTO does the, the paw coin store. So they have to buy all the stuff, so I do think that she is consulted on that they're purchasing items for the students to purchase with their paw coins-
Okay.
At the paw coin store, but it's all PTA sponsored. But I think it's, I don't, I don't know if it's like a, I don't know if it's expenditures of funds because it's the PTO's funds. I think it's of the activities.
I think you're right, yeah, now that I'm reading that again. Yeah, so I think in that case, since it was like, we wanna buy this giant thing that you would have to approve, we put in, I think that they had to approve that. But I don't think that, like, if the PTA is buying stuff for the carnival, I don't think that the principal's like, okay, yes, I approved the popcorn maker, but not this, you know?
Right, yeah, no.
Okay, so we're not sure if this, 'cause that just seems like- It's not the school's, the principal's money, it's the-
Right, yeah, it's not the district's fund, so the district doesn't have a say in with the PTO how they spend their money.
Right, okay. Alright, so all equipment purchased by the school support organizations and donated to the schools because property of the district must meet all legal requirements, including safety codes, and may be used or disposed of in accordance with district policy and state law. Announcement of booster organization events, activities should clarify, clearly indicate that it is sponsored by a group of the school or district. Groups could warrant, should warrant that the activities will be adequately supervised. Okay.
It's not just booster organization, it's PTA.
I know, well, see, up here, we added this new blue language. But it's talking about booster organizations, which I'm not real keen on all this language. Yeah. I do think the board should be made aware of what's going on with booster organizations, there's only two of them. One's for each high school. I don't think there's a booster at the middle school, but I'm not positive.
No, 'cause the booster, the middle schools don't have sports.
They do, well-
They're intramural. Yeah, that's not sports.
Okey-dokey.
Don't tell the participants.
Well, no, I've got a lot of parents that are up in like, up, like, I can't believe middle school doesn't have sports, and I'm like, well, they do. No, they don't, not like, high school has sports, they don't get to go, yeah, it's really, it's really interesting. 'Cause a lot of parents grew up with, I grew up with middle schools playing.
Yeah, I'm curious why we don't.
I don't know, that's why, why is it just intramural?
I didn't know it was like that.
I didn't either.
So six, seven, eight, the sports that they have, you don't go play at the other schools and play, compete against the other people?
Yeah, I don't know how it works.
Well, I guess that would be something to find out, 'cause as a member of the board, I have no idea. Dave probably knows, but I don't know.
Dave knows, for sure, Dave.
The only thing I know is that my son is playing football this year, and it's through Parks and Rec, but it's through the school too, so it's kind of-
Well, great.
Yes, and, and actually, that answers the question, because my Parks and Rec department director up in Spirit Lake-
Okay.
Made the comment that her soccer at the eleven and up is the feeder teams for the high school.
Yeah.
And I had a parent lose himself on that, because he was like, no, that's not how it should be, not understanding that Parks and Rec soccer is the only thing the middle schoolers can play until they get to high school.
Yeah, not even basketball?
I, I'm gonna find out about basketball.
Okay.
I have a friend that their middle schooler plays.
Basketball, wrestling, baseball, track, track, cross-country.
But do they go up to high school? 'Cause I went to middle school and eighth grade got to go, I know some kids have talked about how they, in eighth grade, play on the high school teams, JV.
Yeah, well, I know we've only had middle school for, I think, for, where's it? God, nineteen, and we had COVID, and then the very following year, so that would've been twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year, is when we transitioned half-six graders up to, 'cause we just transitioned to middle school.
Oh, that's when it happened.
Yeah, it wasn't, we used to be junior high, seventh grade. So it hasn't been that long.
Wish they, wish they kept it K six.
Well, there is a big difference.
Big difference.
So... But see, I don't know why we just call out booster organizations here, but-
Can we just take booster organizations out of the whole policy and just call everything school support organizations?
Well, see, that's what we had done. But then we re-added this back in there, but for some reason, okay, so-
So is there anything in there that's specific to a boost organization, or can it apply to?
I think it would apply to all school support organizations, but we just change it. What's your son's name going into sixth grade?
Carter.
Carter, what's your last name, 'cause I got sixth grade.
Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you a sixth grader too?
Yeah, my daughter is Avery Myers going to sixth grade. What school though? Lakeland? Okay, yeah, me too.
I'm a sixth grader too.
Okay, what's your son?
Colton.
Do you have the two boys?
Yes.
That's enough for me.
That's crazy.
Yeah, okay. So then, if we change this to proposed plans, projects, or activities must be evaluated and promoted in light of their stated contribution to the curricular as well as extracurricular programs of the district. Careful consideration must be given to the total value of all students rather than specific elements, such as team participants. What does that mean?
Um, that's to being super inclusive. And I don't know how you do that with-
Careful consideration.
Just be careful.
So, PTA, PTA is all-inclusive, all students.
Right.
Boosters support the team, so how can it be?
Typically athletics.
Oh, do they do all the athletics?
Well, they're the ones that do like the concession stands for the sporting events, um-
So they do all the sports?
As far as I know.
Okay.
But they may also do like the drama performance, I don't know, um, but they may do other events, but I'm not positive. But the careful consideration must be given to the total value of all students.
Do we need the?
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay, middle school does participate in district versus district basketball, just like the high school.
Okay. Okay.
So it's probably the big sports.
But they probably do it for wrestling as well, but I don't know.
They probably do wrestling, basketball, I don't know.
I don't know about baseball.
Probably football.
Probably football. Track, probably, I guess.
Maybe track.
Elementary, yeah, not inter-district, but they, like, the elementary schools have a track meet, it's like interschool.
Mm-hmm. It's in their district, yeah.
It, it's in district, yeah.
Is it a track meet or is it a cross-country meet?
It's a cross-country meet, I, the one I went to was a cross-country meet, I, I think you're right, I don't think it's an actual track meet with all the track events.
Okay, so here we're dragging the superintendent in as opposed to the principal. So we're making the boosters account, which changed it to school support. The boosters account to the superintendent, but all other organizations account to the building principal. Why would the booster need to account to the superintendent, just not the building principal? Maybe 'cause they go more district-wide, if they're like doing, like you said, all the sporting events, since that would be like multiple schools or something?
I would think the booster's school-oriented though.
It is.
Okay.
'Cause I know, I mean, afford that school that you're playing at, at the home- Well, like, I know at the high school, aside from the boosters, there's also the senior class that annually raises money and all that sort of stuff. And then if there's funds left over, they typically will buy something for the school. But that's not a booster club. The booster, not, no words in my throat, um, from what I recall, is, I mean, they, they typically support on a large-scale event. So I don't know if that's why, but- Did the other one go to the board also, 'cause the rest of that sentence is it goes to the board too? The board's never seen anything from any of the organizations.
Maybe we should have a section, it's like, here's what you need to support to the board, or supply to the board, I mean, it's just a list of organizations at each school. Just like, make it clear if you guys haven't seen anything, and this is specifying all the organizations to do things that clearly they have not done.
Right. No one should be using the tax ID number.
So the district may not accept checks made out to booster organizations? Is it the district will not?
Oh, actually, that, that, that doesn't happen, that happens.
It does.
It does happen.
It does.
Yeah.
Because the PTA will put on something and I've gotta pay it, and so then I just go pay it at school and they put an envelope for the PTA.
Okay, so-
Okay.
The school support organization may not accept checks made out to the district, and the district may not accept checks made out to the booster or the school support organization.
But it is a may there, I feel like it's the district reserving the right to not accept checks, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's actually good.
The other one's a may as well.
I was just saying, yeah, a lot of parents would be lost without, like, the elementary school taking checks.
Okay.
Right. Especially for like auction items and stuff like that.
Okay. The district officials should not have a leadership role in a booster organization, um, I think I'm gonna highlight this, 'cause number one, I don't know who district officials are, if they're meaning the administration, by this incredibly well-written policy. Um, or if it's, because I know, like, we do have some district staff that are actually like the president of a booster organization. I don't know that that's appropriate. But in defense of that parent, or that staff member, they're a parent and their kid is in school, so you're wearing dual hats, and I don't know-
What to hear about that?
I don't know what's right and wrong about that, well, I know what's wrong about that, but I don't know. I don't know if it's a big to-do or if it's, if it's a not-to-do. It's a booster club and not like the PTA? Correct, it's a booster club.
Yeah, for a PTA, I could see there being conflict of interest that actually mattered, but for booster organizations, it's hard to see that.
A conflict of interest, but I can see-
Yeah.
Yeah, for a booster organization, I don't see the conflict of interest.
Why? What's the difference? The PTA is specifically, well, I guess it's a parent-teacher organization, but I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, I feel like parents think of it as it's the parents' organization and there are teachers that can be there too.
Right.
Right, I think it would be really easy for a teacher to take over the PTA.
Right, and you lead it all down.
Well, I'm a teacher, so blah, blah, blah.
Do it my way.
Right, exactly.
Well, I mean, eh, eh, yeah, and I don't know where that conflict of interest would come up with a booster club, with school officials.
Right, yeah, that's-
Unless somebody was like, a parent, a teacher parent, and they won something specific for-
Their kid's football team or something?
But that's-
But that could be if they were a teacher or not.
I mean, that happens.
It does.
Regardless.
Where you've got, uh, staff that are participating in the booster club for the benefit of their child's sports organization. Or sports team or whatever. But they could do that if they were just a parent too, right, like, I don't know. I mean, I, as a parent, I mean, if I'm a staff member, but I'm also a parent, and I wanna be active, then pitter-patter, have-at-er, because I'm just gonna be volunteering my time, but if you're holding the president position, or the vice president position, or the treasurer position, I just don't know that that's where you can have influence, I don't know. That's my only thing.
Yeah, you've got a good point, 'cause also too, yeah.
So, I'll just highlight that, I have the board figure it out, 'cause I don't know.
That sounds good.
Um, fundraising activities should not occur on district premises or during school hours unless permission has been given. Superintendent or principal?
'Cause, yeah, I'm sure all the elementary schools run, I'm just wondering if Lisa gives the okay on all the fundraising activities that have to happen at elementary schools. 'Cause there's a lot. But our PTA is like constantly fundraising, constantly.
Okay, that's a lie. Um, booster organizations are- Ah, do you know, I'm stuck in my throat, it's driving me nuts.
Hopefully it's a little frog.
Um, the pollen count's really high.
I don't feel it. Is it? Yeah, I was out in our field today and I was like hacking up a lung.
I keep sneezing, that's how I know, and my nose has been bugging me.
So this annual, 'cause I thought, over here, under financial records, we, yeah, all this stuff got added, I just don't know that I like it, but that's it.
Yeah, there's a lot of tax, huh?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot for booster clubs.
Yeah, people, parents just donating their time for the betterment of the school. I just don't know for review and approval, why would we be approving it? I mean, we wouldn't have any control over it, so I don't understand. I'm going to highlight this and ask the board about it, they can figure it out, I mean, unless you all have input.
I mean, it looks to me like a provision, so that we don't have a, uh, like appreciation of A.L. Hitler Club formed or something.
Okay.
That's the only reason, you know, if you have like an objectionable flobber.
But this, but this is, this is actually like financials. Why is the school support organization submitting financials to the board for approval?
I don't know.
Is that all it is?
Yeah, income, expenses, and balance sheets, those are financials. I don't, I don't think it's the-
Well, if I was playing devil's advocate, I would say if these groups, like the PTA is constantly fundraising from parents at the school, and the school has, the principal or whoever has approved them to function onsite and have access to the parents and all of that, is it appropriate then for there to be some oversight in how they're using the funds to make sure?
They're a nonprofit, so their books are open to anybody and everybody at any given time.
So that doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter.
For?
'Cause they're a nonprofit, PTAs are nonprofits.
Right.
And that's why they can fund it.
I would assume the booster is also-
So a parent, if they wanna question the financials, a parent can go and request all the financials.
I think, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think it makes sense, was support organizations must submit on request, so like, it's clear that you have the right to see it, should you want to see it, but there's not any requirement.
Because that is the requirement in five oh one C three, you have to be able to provide your financials to anybody, and they, and to audit it, if somebody wants to audit your financials. Now, I don't know if boosters run the same, I just know PTAs get that designation.
Do you want a timeline on there, like, they have to provide them within X amount of days upon request?
There's law around that, so they would have to abide by, um-
These organizations are probably not aware of the law though.
I would hope so, 'cause PTA should have bylaws.
They should.
They should, but like any small organization, like, for example, my H O A, it's, um, not something to be taken for granted.
So school support organizations must submit upon request to the board annual reports on income, expenses, and balance sheets?
Yeah, I think that's-
Okay.
I have this one. But, yeah. I think if there's a lawyer here, they would want a timeline added, but, um-
I'm gonna change this up, 'cause it's bugging me. Uh, submit.
To the board on request, yeah, that's better. How many policies are we planning on getting through today?
Hopefully, we're-
I feel like we should calibrate our Theronus so as to meet the goal.
Oh, come on. Um, okay, so. Okay, so the principal must be consulted prior, okay, all such fundraising. To be used for the. Okay. We're already done. Okay, this announcement of booster organization events and activities should clearly indicate that it is sponsored by the group and not the school district, school district. Um, is that okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That, that happens.
Alt shift five. Oops. Oh dang it. These silly keys just don't work. Okay. So that was taken out. Booster organizations shall use a fiscal reporting period that begins July one. Okay.
Is that, what's fiscal year is the district on?
July through June.
I mean, while I don't know why the district can call out when their fiscal year is, I would imagine that it automatically correlates with the district calendar.
Okay.
To make it easier.
Okay.
However, I'm gonna say if any organization has a fiscal year calendar year, and especially the PTAs who are nonprofits, changing that is really
A pain.
A pain.
Okay.
You could have grandfather clause or something on it.
I guess. Well, what I don't understand, I guess, is why are we dictating how the financials records are?
That is a good question.
Done.
Yeah, 'cause all of this is about the financial records.
Right.
You're right, I don't understand why. Why is the ISBA wants so much oversight into parent organizations?
I don't know.
That, that, that's the thing that I find very interesting about this policy is the length and the detail on a parent organization, given the lack of length and details in other policies with students.
Yeah. Well, okay, so let's just do this, 'cause I don't necessarily know that, um. Let's just strike it through and if anybody wants a brought back, then
Yeah.
Board can address that. Um.
It's a good observation, Dee.
I mean, that's a lot of oversight.
Seriously?
Uh.
Yeah, 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 okay, those regulations prohibit regeneration. Any source outside of the local school board, return for services rendered in instructing or coaching any high school facilities that provision shall apply to. What does this have to do with booster clubs?
Strike.
I'm gonna use, oh, okay. Isn't it alt control five? Oh, it's alt shift five, okay. My bad.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. The computer, it's the person typing the keys. Okay. Alt shift five, thank you. I think that needs to be struck.
Yeah, 'cause not only do they use the logo, it's in the same, it's like abolishing an organization.
Why would they deposit all the funds? So, is this for booster clubs that are sponsored by the district?
Yeah, that paragraph does make more sense for booster clubs than for school support organizations generally.
So, if they're, if the logo or the mascot or the name, district's name is revoked for use by the booster organization, then we're in a sense saying they're abolished?
That's, that's exactly what it, it means there, it's just not explicit.
Okay, that doesn't make any sense.
'Cause if we're taking all their money.
District can't take all their money. Doesn't belong to the district.
Correct.
Right.
So I don't know what the point of that would be. Um. Okay, so. Any I M contributes to the school must meet all the requirements. Okay, we already addressed that.
Oh, you need to strike that last sentence.
This bottom one, all the intent. Oh, yeah. Okay. So, I'll just strike this out too. Okay. Moving on.
Discrimination.
Is that covered by all already?
I was gonna say, I would just, yeah.
Okay. Moving on.
For the donations part, let me just clarify too. They're not talking about money there, they're talking about like if you donated, like they said playground equipment, right?
Right, which we addressed up here.
Already.
Yeah, we did, we said, um.
All equipment, yeah.
All equipment, if can be disposed.
Yeah, okay, so that was redundant.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Moving on. That's twenty seven hundred. Oh, this is the high school regulation. So, we just need to read through this, make sure it's okay.
Didn't we do this before? We did, but weren't we waiting on something?
We did, there was no comment from
Okay.
the principals.
Okay.
I don't think we went through twenty seven hundred P.
Okay.
So, first thing I'm going to strike is this.
There's the P.
You're my bag. So, ready to register.
Thank you. Fix the credits line on that one.
This is another P D policy, but this one probably needs to be.
Okay, so, we're still not adding up to thirty. Because six and nine is fifteen and eight and six
Is fourteen.
Fourteen, which equals twenty nine, and it's saying thirty.
I think it was twenty nine, but we changed it to thirty.
I think that's correct.
That was correct. However.
They should actually add thirty.
Can you? I know.
Because, uh, so what is it that that extra credit, the?
It was under mystery.
Right, so. Alright, um.
So there's six credits of science, five credits of social studies, two credits of arts and humanities, and one credit of health and wellness.
Okay.
It's on the next page.
Thank you. Six. Fourteen, fifteen. And fifteen is thirty.
'Cause that's all math.
Okay, so this eight and six has to do with these credits. Okay.
Yeah.
So we're at thirty. Alright, we can do that.
You're, yeah, well over thirty.
Okay. Financial literacy, do we offer that?
It would be nice.
Well, I know.
Exactly.
Well, I know that there have been, they've added some financial courses such as like Dave Ramsey's Financial Peace.
Really? This school, this is a top or a, a school?
At the high school. Um, but it's an elective, it's not a core math. But to me, if we're doing economics and financial literacy, that should be part of it. Six, something, okay.
Oh, so eighteen elective credits in addition to that.
Okay. So that would make us forty eight, okay. Okay, so this is saying the same thing.
Yeah. Is physical education an elective? Like, does that count as an elective credit? Is that what they're saying? 'Cause I don't see it in the.
Well, no, it's just health and wellness.
Health and wellness.
So you have to take either P E or health, I guess, in high school? Wow, I had to take both, that's awesome.
I had to take P E every year.
P E is optional. Yeah, me too. P E is mandatory every year, which is probably more important now than it was when I was a kid.
Me too.
Yeah. Actually, you're right.
Yeah.
Gosh, I mean, I had to take two years. Actually, they split the semester, one semester of health, one semester of P E.
I had P E.
That's what it was.
Always.
So we had two years of it.
Yeah. There's a lot of conditions here. I don't know why a parent would not give their child credit for doing high school work in middle school.
Yeah, that would be, that would be funny.
What's the eight and six program? Where do you see that?
Or here.
Bottom left paragraph, yeah.
Oh, it's right there.
Oh, that's this up here, this eight and six delio. Earn eight or more high school credits of mathematics and complete six or more math credits prior to the fall of their last year. Because I think the you have to take two credits your senior year. Unless, there's a bracket there, where'd the bracket go? Unless they've completed their mathematics in this fashion. Because eighth graders, as long as there is, uh, the way I understand it, a teacher teaching algebra at the middle school that's certified for high school, then the kids taking that class in middle school can actually transfer that up to high school. So what they're saying is if you're doing the six eight program, if your eighth grade year, you're taking the high school credit and that carries over, then you don't need to take your senior year in mathematics. Otherwise, if you don't do that, then you have to take math all four years.
Which is a good thing.
Oh, yeah, I love math. Or, well, you only need six credits, so it would be math at least three years, but here's. Before your senior year.
So you have your eight.
Before your senior year.
Yeah, your eighth grade, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade would be your eight credits, okay.
So that's the six eight six program. Hmm, interesting.
Oh, that computer science and dual credit engineering, can I?
Yeah. So did I, yeah, we did, okay. So is computer science considered a science elective? I have no idea.
The name would suggest it is.
Yep, I guess it is.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see. They should offer statistics in high school.
Mm, they did when I was, when I was in high school, it was standard.
Okay, so where are we saying this twice?
I don't know. Cause one's for math, one's for science.
Oh.
Cause they're electives for both math and science, cause it's a STEM class.
Okay, was the first one math?
Yep.
Yeah.
First one's math and second one's science, cause it's STEM.
Oh, okay. But I would think you can just say it once at the end.
I agree.
Yeah. Thank you.
So you need to, wherever that asterisk lives, you need to remove it.
What do you mean?
Oh, in the sentence above it.
This one?
Uh.
No, the one above.
Above. So we delete it, nope, keep going up.
No, keep going up.
Alright. Maybe there isn't even one, something you didn't remember.
Oh, never mind, okay, so it's not even, cause that should have been double asterisk.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
It's all good.
Well, there's science.
It's all good. Cause there's the asterisk there.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
There's asterisks everywhere.
And there's the asterisk there, yeah.
I took that one parentheses off, cause I was like, it makes no sense, but. I don't remember where it was. Well, okay, do. Okay, so I think that's. Oh wait, we're still behind, oh god, no we're not, are we?
No, we're good, we went through all of them.
Did we? Oh no, we didn't.
Oh, no, not the. Not the middle school credit, well, we stopped at the eight and six program and then college entrance examination.
Okay, there we are.
You have to take the A C T or S A T?
I don't understand that.
Does the P S A T count?
I don't know.
And the other thing I'm gonna say about the S A T, here's, here's my challenge with this requirement is. The A C T not so much, the S A T is a stupidly expensive exam.
How much does it cost now?
It's over a hundred dollars, it was a hundred dollars when I was in high school.
So is the district paying for the students to take it?
Exactly.
Cause if they are, then I think that's fine, if they're not, then there's a problem.
Yep. That needs to be looked at.
But I think it's awesome that students in the eleventh grade are taking one of those.
Now, the A C T, when I took it, I think it was like. Oh, I'm twenty something, we should look at that, we need to look at the cost of this A T. Could be free right now, with all the challenges it's had, but let's find out. Oh, it's gotten cheaper.
Dang.
Maybe because it's on a computer and it's not paper anymore.
How much is it?
Sixty bucks.
Okay. Still, if parents are paying for it, it's gonna cause a nightmare.
You can get a fee waiver. Has this always been a requirement?
I honestly don't know.
Cause it's a really weird requirement for.
I would say yes.
A district where I know several kids going into their senior year, they're like, I'm not going to college.
Right, right.
I'll say, my reaction to it was pleasant surprise. It was pleasantly surprised to see it there, it's like, oh, it's a high standard, grade eleven.
So apparently.
So if you're, yeah, if you're taking it in grade eleven, clearly, if you want to go to college, you'll take it if you're in grade twelve.
But we have to pay for the fee waiver.
What?
I.
What?
You have to pay for the fee waiver.
That's hilarious.
What?
They, they nickel and dime you, you should see, yes, it's a, it's.
That's hilarious.
Oh, maybe it's just the answer service, never mind, that's weird, that is so weird.
You don't have to retake it in twelfth grade if you took it in eleventh grade though, I think you can use your eleventh.
You, you can, but you would want to unless, I don't know, I guess if you don't care, then you wouldn't, but I would definitely take it again, cause hopefully you're better in twelfth grade than you were in eleventh grade.
But why would you need to take the A C T or S A T if you are dual enrolled? And will graduate with your associates?
I don't think you would, but I still think it's good experience to have.
Okay, I hear you and I would agree with that, but it doesn't even address that.
Yeah, that's true.
As an exemption.
Right.
You have to be F R L if you uh wanna, wanna take a fee waiver.
What if you're a parent and you, your kid is not planning to go to college and wants to, you know, go get a job?
Or go in the military.
Or go in the military, you don't want them to take, have to take the test. I'm just making up this scenario, and they have test anxiety and all the things, and so you're like, no, you don't have to take the test.
Right. Right.
It doesn't count against them though, does it? Like if they do bad, it's not, is it counting towards their grade or anything? Or are they just required to pass it? I don't know if there's a.
I don't know.
I don't think.
I don't. Is there even a passing standard? I don't think there is.
There's, yeah.
There is that acute place replacement exam during your senior year.
Right, but what I'm wondering is I know that there are stats on how many kids are going to college. And I'm wondering if that's determined by the number of students that take the A C T or S A T.
Ah, if that's it, that would be lame.
Say that again, I didn't follow you.
They could be gaming the system.
Yeah, we have statistics that show how many kids are going to college. And that was something that's been championed on by prior superintendents. And I don't know if it's calculated by this A C T or S A T score, I mean like. That these many kids have taken it, therefore the assumption is they're all going to college.
They have dug into that statistic and the graduation rate.
Yeah.
And they've all been fubard. Everybody.
Everybody's gaming it?
Yes.
They gained the numbers and percentages, that just came out in the report, the graduation rates are super off than what they thought. That districts were elevating graduation rates. And the same thing with college bound.
Right.
Because you get money, it's a money game, that, that, that is basically all it is, it's a money game.
Yeah, it is.
Well, in these days with all the concerns about college, I'm sort of.
Right.
You know, is this really a priority?
Right.
Well, I, I mean, if there isn't a law that states that it is a requirement, I don't know that we have to require it.
That's true. I don't think you do.
But I don't know enough, Ramona's not here.
Right.
She's membrane for that. So I would say we need to ask that question.
Yeah. So I'm on the Department of Education's State of Idaho website.
Yeah.
And it says, Idaho State Board of Education has set standards for Idaho students graduating from Idaho Public School. The local school district may establish graduation requirements beyond this state minimum.
Right.
Um, so from that, so at your school, but the state requirements, it says forty six credits.
Right.
Senior project, government civics proficiency, six credits math, six science, nine language arts, five social studies, two humanities, one health wellness. It doesn't say anything about taking it.
And then there's a lot of colleges that don't require A C T or A C T anymore, cause it's racist. It's okay, there's a lot of districts there removing Algebra One, cause it's racist too, so crazy. That's California though.
So.
I don't think it counts.
So the State Board of Education doesn't say anything about college entrance, okay?
It does, yeah, from this.
It shouldn't be a requirement, that's a tall tale, that's a tall order.
I don't think it should either. Um, senior project, a student shall complete a senior project that includes a written report, an oral presentation, but he ended up in grade twelve. Maybe multi-year projects, groups, individual, yada, 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 that is a requirement, you know that, I don't.
That is, that's a big project, I was shocked when I saw that.
Well, what's humorous is um when my youngest was graduating. She had a little girlfriend, straight A student all through her entire life, was graduating, actually graduated with her A A degree before she got her high school diploma. Almost did not get her high school diploma because of the senior project, because she was told she didn't have to do it, but then they changed the rules and she had to do it. And she's like, I have my masters, or my associate's degree. And you're not gonna give me my high school diploma because of this, I, I, I've already exceeded.
Hold on while I define a project as walking out my driveway.
Yeah, exactly, and I, I mean, there was a huge uproar. And she had to throw some project together to meet this requirement.
And that's what got that language put in?
I mean. Here's, I, I mean, I found it very interesting, I was just sharing this with somebody in the education realm outside of Idaho. And I was like, they have to do a thesis, they have to do an experiential learning project and project-based learning experiences. I was like, this thing is bigger than my undergrad and my masters. What I had to do, I had to do an undergrad thesis, that's it, uh my under, my grad, I had to do an oral exam. I was like, this is bigger than a PhD uh defense.
Should be.
I mean, I think it's impressive, but it's, that's a big project.
What does the State Board of Education say about?
And they're multi-year projects.
I think maybe multi-year projects.
I will go back to that.
I think, but maybe means that you can do something really awesome for your.
Um, just to drive home the other one too, there's an article from February twenty twenty two. That says, on Thursday, the State Board of Education voted unanimously to waive Idaho's requirement that high school students must take a college entrance exam in order to graduate, so it sounds like they used to.
Oh, so that needs to be taken out.
In twenty twenty two, they dropped that requirement.
Okay.
That is good to know.
So F, just F Y I, and then I'll go back and look about senior projects. They say. It says you have to complete a senior project, that's all it says.
Yep.
So who's created what the senior project consists of?
I would guess that the student does, like the student's given a list of criteria.
No, you mean like this right here.
Right, who, yeah, this section right here.
Who wrote that little section that's like this big, huge thing? Cause that's, that's big.
Also include elements of research and development, my thesis is an experiential learning.
They don't need to learn how to write like that.
In high school? I hope they do.
No.
I was in my masters program with people that I'm like, how many people get here?
Trust me. They did not.
No, I mean, don't get me wrong, like I taught at a college for like twelve years, and I, I've shared some stories about that with people here.
Yeah.
It's like, how did you get out of grade four?
You'd be a very scary professor, Nate.
I don't think I was, I don't think I was.
They don't, they don't, they don't learn how to write research and a thesis in high school. A term paper maybe, if they're lucky, trust me, I've done a lot of market research on writing in K twelve schools.
I think if you told somebody to do it, I think it's fairly clear what would need to be done. And I think it's true of any writing assignment, that most students know how to do it. But if we wanna dumb it down, we can always dumb it down.
It's Title One school district. It's, it's just big, cause it's, it's something that's outside. You have to think about like, how many kids are gonna be writing research for a thesis? And presenting on project-based learning experiences in their work life.
So, like all of these, like it, it, it matters to some degree what it says here, but all of these are gonna be normalized to the mean of student performance, like you can say this. They're gonna be graded according to whatever bell curve comes out of the students, I don't think.
Okay.
I, I think the language is almost irrelevant.
Okay.
I think it's just a waste of time, honestly.
It could be a waste of time, or it could be awesome. There's all kinds of cool projects.
You're correct, I guarantee half these kids throw it together in the last two weeks.
That could be bad. I would say eighty-five percent at least.
I'd say higher. But it's higher.
But I mean.
I'm gonna do, I'm gonna ask to do a survey, a research survey in the district, asking uh how long it took them to do their senior project.
Well, two weeks, no, I don't think two weeks.
Yeah.
I really wanna know this, I wanna.
That would be an interesting statistic to know, but if there is a senior project, like I imagine there's gonna be like checking periods, like you are starting in grade twelve. Like in the first month, you need to define what your project is gonna be, if you haven't already, typically there's milestones like that.
When I did my senior project, that's how it was, and you had to prove that you were actually doing it throughout the year.
Yeah. Chat G P T, write a.
But the paper part was.
Oh yeah, I forgot, Chat G P T, there you go.
Write a senior project. Explaining the research and development that I didn't do on the behavior of ants in northern Idaho.
Sounds amazing.
Right.
And see, you just, that's it, that's what they're gonna do, cause the district doesn't have a policy on A I, does it?
I think they have an ethics policy, I think that covers A I.
Are you, no, no, it doesn't.
If I was the superintendent, it would.
You're gonna have to put it in policy though.
I, yeah, it's pretty obvious you're cheating if you're using generative A I to do things.
Oh, it's being used a lot, again, I've done a lot more.
Oh, I'm not saying it's not being used, I'm, I'm sure it is being used, but I'm also sure that everybody is aware that it's cheating.
Teacher.
Well, I read an article from this guru professor dude who wrote a paper twenty, like twenty years ago.
Yeah.
And it was his paper original, and then someone submitted it to see how much he had used, and it was claiming that he had used that chat.
Yeah, a lot of the detection tools are garbage, like there's lots of false positives, so you do have to be careful with that, but it's also the case that like.
Correct. Yes.
I mean, you can always tell it to write in different styles, but most A Is write in a fairly distinctive style, um very flowy.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you're paying attention, you'll be able to recognize it, especially if you, and, and the other solution is in-class writing assignments, and then you can like look at the in-class writing assignments, like is this the same style?
Yeah, yeah. So. So the civics test.
Once again, I'm pleasantly surprised by this requirement.
I was too, and then I was like, ooh, good thing I didn't have to take it. No, actually, I just took the, somebody posted up, can you pass the immigration test, and I could, so it felt good.
At any time after enrolling in grade seven? Huh. I wonder why.
What?
Because if this is high school graduation requirements. Why in grade seven we could administer?
Um.
Why not before grade seven, actually, remind you of the question, take any time.
I, this is, the district L E A, L E A is the local education agency, the same thing as a district, one of those two needs to be struck.
What do you mean?
I think L E A, according to the um I S B A, it was supposed to be struck out.
District was, or?
No, L E A, cause it's, it's local education agency.
Which is the same thing as the district.
Which is the same thing as the district. Um, some states. That have like the regions, like West Virginian, upstate New York has regions. They use L E A because those are more like a local education agency, because they oversee multiple districts.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really compounding.
Because we have an L E A.
Who's your L? Who's your LEA?
It's a group, it's the teachers' union.
Oh, no, 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 that, the LEA, Local Education Agency, is actually the district or a regional hub for districts in the area.
Okay.
Just like SEA is the State Education Agency.
Okay.
The union is a completely different thing.
Well, cause I know that they're affiliated with the state's.
Union.
Is, okay, maybe. All I know is he's an interesting character.
According to my friends in Boston, the teachers' unions are all Marxists.
They're in Washington.
It's probably true.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
There's actually a book on that I plan to read at some point in the future.
What book?
Um, The Marxification of Education.
There's another good book on that.
Sounds a little bit crazy, but.
Standing Up to Goliath, have you heard of that one?
I have not.
That's a former teacher who wrote a book about the teachers' unions.
What I was talking about was written by an atheist math professor. Which is a strange background to write such a book.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but uh, anyway. I would dismiss this like probably anytime prior to two years from now. But now, like, I'll actually look into it. We'll see where the, like, the the real telling thing is gonna be, who are the most cited people in the professional journals of these organizations?
And where do their donations go?
Okay, so here's the early completion, okay, cause I didn't know where it was in the.
Shouldn't a waiver requirement come last night?
What?
Oh, I was just thinking maybe.
That this should be moved below everything?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Oh, maybe not. This is really out of sync.
Nothing?
Outward.
Well, maybe it could go here.
That's good enough.
So then we'll go back up to here.
I just, I just do that sometimes. I never know if people can actually hear that.
Oh, yes.
That's moderately awkward.
It just made my neck hurt.
It did, it made my neck hurt too.
Overall, grade point of the student weighted and unwaisted will be considered.
Can you get over a four point O here?
Yes.
Okay.
From AP credits? I have no idea.
It has to be AP credits. There's, well, I've never heard any other way to get more than four.
No, actually, um, our friend last, two weeks ago was saying that that some of the AP courses, well, one, they have a limited number of AP courses, but I don't know, like, sometimes how they're, I don't know. It has to do with the weighted and unwaisted.
I I think weighted and unwaisted GPA will be considered is strangely ambiguous. I think it's clear that weighted is the relevant metric here.
I don't know.
Cause if it's unwaisted, like, you have a one credit class and a three credit class. If it's unwaisted, they count for the same towards your GPA, but there's three times as much work going to the three credit classes, so clearly it should count for three times as much as the one credit class, like, all colleges do it that way. I've actually never heard of anyone doing it a different way until, I think, last meeting or a couple meetings ago when it was brought up.
And that, I think that's why I asked. I asked if AP was weighted, and they said no. And I was like.
Wait, wait, what does that mean, AP was weighted? Like, weighted with a five? Cause if we're talking about how AP classes are weighted, that needs to be spelled out. I, so when I'm talking about weighted, I'm talking about credits, not whether it's out of four out of five.
Okay.
Um.
This is GP, this is grade point average, weighted and unwaisted.
Right, and so weighted and unwaisted can mean two things. It can mean we count all classes the same toward the weighted average. Or, or towards, that would be the unwaisted average, or we count each credit. So a three-credit class is weighted three times as highly as a one-credit class.
Okay, so if I, if you and I were both going for valedictorian, let's say, and I took a one-credit class.
And gotta be, and I took a, yeah.
And you took a three-credit class and gotta be.
Right.
You would be ahead of me.
No, you would win.
With weighted.
No, cause we're talking, we're assuming we got straight As, but you gotta be in a one-credit class and I gotta be in a three-credit class.
Oh.
So you would win in that case.
So I would win. Okay, but then if, let's say we both got As, and the rest of them were Bs, and it's just you and me.
Yes, yes, I'm following you. Yes, then, yes.
I've never thought about that.
I mean, if it's not weighted, it, like, I mean, some of these classes are like eight credits, like, is English eight credits here? So if you get like a B in an A credit class, it should clearly count for eight times as much as the one-credit speech or A class, should be weighted like per unit time in class. I've honestly never heard of anything else until, um, I got here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know enough.
You might even wanna specify the type of weighted average.
That's what I was, that's what.
Nobody's thinking like a harmonic mean or geometric mean or something.
No, I agree with you a hundred percent because when this came up a couple weeks ago, I was like, how do you define weighted and unwaisted GPA? And nobody could.
I think the correct way to do it is an arithmetic weighted average, but then we need additional language for AP classes for how AP classes are weighted.
Yes, because that's not clear on if AP, cause APs should be. Do we, and then they have a, they have a plus minus system here, right?
I don't know what that means.
So like an A minus is worth four point seven, or three point seven or something.
So, an A plus is four. A, A is three point five.
No, cause B is three.
Oh, B is three.
So A would be like three point seven or something.
Okay, so three point seven, and then A minus would be three point five.
Right. And then a B plus is three point.
Does that, I'm interested to do it that way?
This is more complicated.
It's complicated.
Yeah.
Than just ABC.
And it is more granular too. Like, you're you're more likely to have one valedictorian. I don't think I've ever been somewhere that did plus minus.
Oh, I lived in plus minus world throughout my education. And the minuses killed my GPA at times.
No.
Did it kick you off honor roll?
Dang minuses.
Oh.
Yeah.
Are you calling Ramona? No, I'm calling Jimmy Hoffman.
Who's Jimmy Hoffman?
The principal at Lakeland.
Oh, good, perfect.
Somebody didn't pick up.
Trump.
And he'll panic when he gets my message.
That means he's contritrus, that's good.
Because what, AP should be five for an A, right?
Hey, Jimmy.
I don't, I don't have a position on whether it should or shouldn't. When I did AP classes, it's still a norm, but if that's the norm, then cool.
I think that's.
And then you just specify AP classes on a scale of zero to five instead of zero to four.
If you could give me a buzz back, I would really appreciate it, uh, two oh eight seven five five four three four three. If I don't hear back from you before eight, no worries about calling. I'll talk to you soon, hopefully. Bye-bye. Cause yeah, I, I don't know enough to know what they, I've often tried to figure it out, but no one can seem to give a clear-cut answer.
It should be the weighted arithmetic average, but then you need additional language for whether AP classes are out of four or five.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, talk to the principal, the principal's gonna know. If the principal tells you it shouldn't be weighted, then he doesn't know what he's talking about.
Okay, okay. I don't think I have our hands number. Yeah, we do not. Do you have our hands number? Okay.
Do you wanna call Lynn?
Yeah, Lynn, I imagine, I don't know, maybe she's.
She's traveling. And I don't know that she knows.
How about Lisa?
I don't know if Lisa knows. And she's sick.
Oh, she's sick.
She's sick?
Yeah, she is. I hate being sick ones, really hot out. Well, we can just.
Highlight it?
Yep.
Yeah, we, it could mean different things. It could mean something that's not as silly as what I'm thinking it means.
I've never even heard of weighted and unwaisted for GPAs.
I've never heard of unwaisted, it's just always weighted.
Yeah.
Like, it, they could specifically be referring to AP classes here. Cause if they're only weighting according to whether AP classes are out of four or five, then I, I think that's a reasonable statement.
I can only say to one.
No, you should be able, can you sign both?
No.
Oh, no.
All right, well, it'll go to both of them.
Yep.
Okay.
His waiver of requirement not lined up to the left, do you see that?
What's that?
The waiver of requirement that underlined.
Yeah.
Is it not lined up?
Probably not. It needs to be completely reformed, that is.
Okay, so it might.
Don't later, cause that will be in his job. Cause I could spend all day on it and then it's.
Poor waste of time, so.
I will say, Michelle, that your English skills are clearly superior to those of whoever.
IASBA.
It's gotta be IASBA, I guess, yeah.
Sometimes.
Uh, graduation requirements generally will not be waived, generally, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that needs to move to the front of the.
You think it should be at the front?
I think what you did is exactly what I was thinking.
Okay.
I think if we're gonna leave the last sentence, the generally needs to stay there.
You think so?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too. I just think it's awfully harsh.
Yeah, I agree. I like that, just take it under, it will not be waived, legit. Will not be waived except as outlawed. Yeah, I think if you take it under any circumstances, you can take it generally too.
Okay.
Less is more. And the however thing will be eliminated, I think, too.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
English literate.
Rare and unique. So it's not rare if it's not unique, but it is a hardship that's not considered, sorry.
No, you've got a point.
You do?
So, okay, um.
So, is it early achievement of college career readiness and flexible schedule, and is that, oh no.
I think there's two titles, like, one's the ISBA title and one's ours. Yeah, that is correct.
Okay. Okay. What's a college and career readiness score?
I don't know, because this is, uh, it seems to be all about, uh, the second little sub-paragraph is about early graduation. So I think, uh.
What's a participation portfolio?
I don't know.
Another great question.
I have no idea.
At least it's literative. I can't see any other virtues to it, it's not literal.
No, I just love how the senior branding is suggestive of their experience in achieving the college and career readiness score.
Oh yeah, the detailed explanation of a student's future plans, that's always a fun one. I remember doing that in high school. It's like, how am I gonna get graded on this? The more grandiose, the better. Make it super grandiose.
King. Engaged another subject identified by the board. Oh my lord.
That seems like a little much, huh?
I think so. I just don't understand what the purpose of this is. I mean, does the state board say anything about this?
Let's look at that. Yeah, there is, there's, um.
Yeah. Students may be able to participate in a flexible school schedule, graduate early, or receive credit for extended learning opportunities. And if I click on the flexible schedule, early graduation thing, up comes Idaho statute. Title thirty-three, chapter sixty, sixty-one. A student is eligible to take a flexible schedule as provided in subsection two of the section if, and it's literally. What we have, yeah, so apparently this is state.
Requirement.
It's a statute. Do we list it at the bottom of our thing?
Yep.
Nope, cause this is on the procedure.
Oh.
This isn't part of the policy, which, well, let's see if it's on the policy here. We've got advanced opportunities, extended learning opportunities, self-directed learners, mastery. We've got advanced opportunities, extended learning opportunities, self-directed learners, mastery-based education. High school graduation requirement. Um, advanced opportunities. Financial literacy.
No, cause they've got thirty-three, six, one, oh, one. I think this is thirty-three, six, one, oh, two.
Oh.
So maybe we should add it.
Uh, add sequence, so it would be all the ones in thirty-six.
Thirty-three?
Thirty-three dash six, oh, one, add sequence.
Okay, it means more than oh, one?
Yep.
Okay. Then yes.
I mean, it's all of them.
Okay.
Um. But what I'm curious is why this is over here under the procedure. Well, I guess it's okay. What if, um. Just to confuse masses. Cause, okay, the first paragraph is specific to graduating early. Or early completion of graduation requirements. Second paragraph is about this flexible pedileo.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Or relief from. Doing the remaining requirements. So do you think that convolutes everything? If we make that one whole title? Because then it just rolls into those.
What I just stumbled upon.
What?
Back in twenty eighteen, Idaho ranked in the top five states for college and career readiness. U S News report ranked them fifth based on the percentage of students that met the ACT and SAT benchmark.
There it is.
There it is.
Yeah. That's what it is.
That's the college and career readiness score is the ACT, but it's the ACT SAT.
Thirteen and right. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's the only thing I can pull up that has any mention of score under college and career readiness on the Board of Education side.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Um, okay, can you scroll back up for a second to, to look at your question? For the completion, or you can go back down the other thing. I mean, I don't think it's too confusing.
You don't think it's too confusing?
Are you thinking of taking moving the, breaking that title in half basically?
No, I just merged it together.
No.
But because the one paragraph, but because what I don't like is the first paragraph is early completion of graduation requirements. And then we go into the early achievement of college and career readiness and flexible schedule, but that first paragraph says. Uh, graduate early.
I know, I was, that's why I was confused.
Yeah. So that's why if we just make the whole title one big thing, people can read through it.
Yeah.
But is that too convoluted, too confusing to whatever?
Are people gonna look through this?
That's a good question.
Because I'm just saying the whole college and career readiness score, people are gonna go, what is that? I mean, what's a participation portfolio? I mean.
I know, it's, this isn't clear.
Well, do we wanna make it more clear, or is this like one of those, for the rare circumstances, I assume, where this would be happening, then the parent would read this. Be maybe a little confused, and then we'd contact the district office and we just deal with that.
If the student's in a position to do this, I feel like they're probably gonna be auden enough to figure out what the process is.
Right.
I would think so.
Right, and I would imagine this is rare.
Right.
I don't know.
No, I mean, it's, it's gotta be rare. It's gotta be.
I don't know if it is rare, because you have kids that take. Okay, I guess that's the flexible schedule. Cause that's where you can take college courses.
But most of those kids, I think, still graduate with their peers. Cause they probably want to.
Right.
Well, yeah, if you can do, knock out two years of dummy coursework in college. In high school, and then limit your post-secondary to two or three years, that would be amazing.
And it's now easier than ever. With new reduced college standards.
And reduced they are. Okay, so any other comments, concerns, questions, whatever, on this delio?
I do not.
Okay. So that's gone, that's gone, that's gone. And we have twenty-five minutes. So we did that, we did that, we did that. Which brings us down to open enrollment.
Is this the new, is this new policy for us because of the law?
Yes.
Yes, well, see, what happened was we always had the open enrollment policy. And then last year, we were like, we're done, let's close our borders. And everyone was all up for about that. Why are we closing the borders? Well, because our classes are crowded. You know, let's, let's be realistic here. And now they put legislation in saying, well, you can't do that. Everybody's, it's a free-for-all.
This is, uh, Governor Little's, um, alternative to school choice.
Right, yeah, it's him naked parents all have the freedom, but.
You don't get the money.
Yeah, we don't get the money, and you don't really have the choice, because schools can say, this is our cap.
Yeah, right.
Which is what we need to.
Define.
Right.
Do you wanna do, um, twenty-seven, twenty, cause it looks like it's pretty short and sweet? And we could get that one knocked out.
Okay.
Since.
Participation and commencement exercises?
Didn't we start this?
Yeah, I thought we did. I actually. Thought we started this one as well.
Cause we were talking about.
But that is.
Oh yeah, we added that to it.
But that's ISBA.
I agree, that is crucial.
When was that added?
The blue is ISBA language. So. I don't know. Let's see here.
So that's how they cut off the kid in Kellogg.
Right.
So March twenty-twenty-two.
They changed, did you see the first sentence they changed to? Students write to the district.
Opportunity, yes.
Yeah, change to opportunity.
Cause that is what it is. Could even make privilege.
Yeah, okay.
Almost got it.
Bad joke. Well, it does say privileged. Oh, it does.
It does.
Why is it a privilege? That makes no sense to me. You earned it.
That's right.
Maybe it's a privilege reserved for those who earned it.
Right, who go along with the rhetoric.
You earned your diploma, but the graduation ceremony is a privilege, I guess.
Like, that's a favorable look at it, too.
But yet, the less, the rest of it says, participation in the ceremony. Is reserved for those who have completed all the state and local requirements. But yet.
Yeah, do we need to say it's a privilege? Uh, it, it, it does seem gratuitous to just state that. In fact, can we eliminate everything up to as such, participation in the ceremony is reserved for those members of the graduating class who have completed it?
Thank you, cause I was just about to say, it's a student's choice. To participate.
Right, cause some students don't wanna participate.
Right, I didn't go to my college graduation. It was a long day.
The college?
The college.
I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't walk for my masters because it was at eight o'clock in the morning.
I only walked for my masters, cause my mom was there.
And I said, it was eight o'clock in the morning on Sunday, and I said, oh, heck no.
Plenary, I, that's a word I do not know.
Hey Google.
Hey Google, what does plenary mean? Complete in all respects, unlimited, full.
Total.
Entire.
Oh, musical presentation. That would be fun. Guarantee that, does that ever happen? No. I'd much prefer music over some of them.
Well, what I can tell you is that there usually is a music presentation in the sense that either the choir or the acapella versus.
Oh, the band, or something like that. That's cool.
Yeah. Yeah. Like at, I think it was Timberlake's. One of the seniors sang a song to her class.
Oh, so.
Yeah, we had that my year.
My high school graduation, somebody who couldn't sing, sang a song to the class. There was no claim to be able to sing either.
Would the establishment clause have, the First Amendment? Okay, I don't know what that means.
What's the establishment clause in Freedom of Speech? Where's my trusty little constitutor handbook? I may need it. Oh, free exercise is established, no.
So yeah, I think the fact that we're saying a student may be denied participation doesn't mean that we have to include all this up here.
I, I, I still have. I'm just saying that whole if. And I'll use the Kellogg kid as an example. That his exclusion was considered a school suspension, that's not cool.
Well, and I don't, I, because to me, it's like if a kid doesn't have enough credits to graduate. And is going to take summer school, well, okay, so they're not gonna be participating in the graduation ceremony because they haven't achieved the credits. That doesn't make it a suspension. They're just.
I, I, I know.
Then you could define the, the suspension to mean that, but it's.
Yeah.
But, I mean, a school susp, so a school suspensions go on your permanent record. That's a big deal.
Right. Well. The Establishment Clause says, this website says, the First Amendment's Establishment Clause prohibits the government from making any law respecting an establishment of religion. This clause not only prohibits the government from establishing an official religion, but also prevents government actions that unduly favor one religion over the other. I don't know what that has to do with what they were saying. Oh, are they saying you can't?
I think it's to do with the poem, reading song, musical presentation.
You can't talk religion in your speech? Is that what they're saying?
Well, but that wouldn't, that doesn't work, because at Timberlake.
We, we have our graduations at real life.
Yeah, the graduations for both classes are in real life, but usually there's a prayer or there's something by one of the students.
I was like, glad you're doing it.
Cause the.
Well, do, does the, like, we had a baccalaureate, which.
Yeah, a student's name setting is not a endorsement from the district, right?
Correct.
So.
Yeah, cause is it, do they have a baccalaureate, is it just?
Yeah, is this the ISBA being sneaky?
Well, this was our policy, I mean, this is our policy.
But did we get it from the ISBA?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so it is the ISBA being sneaky, okay.
Because the, in the blue, that's ISBA, right? Down in the legal references?
I think the black is ISBA, so it says like poem, reading, song, musical presentation, whether or not, any other pronouncement they're choosing.
The blue is the new language from ISBA. The black is our current policy, but that doesn't mean that it didn't come from ISBA.
Right, because the blue down there is the constitution.
The reality is. The principal reviews the speeches to make sure that they're not gonna say anything that's.
Right.
Terrible.
Yeah, yeah. Um.
Religious tests and teaching in school prohibited?
Yeah, the student speaker is gonna issue everyone a test.
Why? I don't know that that needs to be listed.
Why is sectarian instruction in Area Two?
What is that?
Sectarian means like Baptists are better than Catholics or something like that.
Why is that all up here? Is this to limit what's happening in a.
Yeah, that's what it looks like to me.
I, I would assume so.
I'm not a Baptist for the record.
What's acts prohibited? What's acts prohibited?
In sixty-seven, fifty-nine.
Hopefully acts prohibited are things like shooting people.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Just setting things on fire.
That's what it's called, though. Acts prohibited, you think it would have a little bit more.
I mean, those are acts that are prohibited.
Oh, it's discrimination.
It's the Commission on Human Rights, acts prohibited.
I'll shut up.
And now we know why the kid in Kellogg got axed from graduation. They were covered by state law.
Did he discriminate against someone?
On the basis of any of those things?
He did not.
Well, they interpreted, it was interpreted as him discriminating against. Sexual orientation.
Language is so muddy these days.
Isn't it? That's amazing. Yes, it's very subjective.
Yeah. Cause I, yeah, no.
So in our draft, do we have to clarify, like we say, a student may be denied participation in graduation ceremonies, do we have to say? Why?
I think just the principle.
Right, like, I, I.
Approving the stuff is good enough, right? We don't have to put in all these human rights and discrimination statutes.
No, I, I struck it.
Right.
And then I struck it down here.
But without acts prohibited?
I think.
Do we wanna put something in here that prevents a re, recurrence of what happened in Kellogg? Or could you even, I mean, in that case, it was the superintendent, like, what can you even do in that case?
Well, see, I, I.
It's a policy.
Yeah.
They have to go by policy, don't they?
Yeah, they do. So if their policy wasn't. Clear, they set themselves up for a lawsuit. Which might be a good thing.
Right.
This doesn't say anything about speech.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
Do you think it's listed in there, like more from? If you're. Not letting someone graduate? That's what this is saying, like, you can't just say. You're Catholic, so you can't graduate. I'm just saying, instead of what, cause I feel like we're interpreting it as, it's trying to.
Why would you cite?
Mold what someone's saying in a speech, but maybe it's more like what the, how the district can.
But there's no discrimination clause in the text, so why are you citing that?
I feel ya.
That's a great question.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it's directed to.
What's governance of schools?
We're just gonna take everything out. Jeez, on to the next one.
For each of them, you can just quote, cite all CFOs.
Yeah.
See, well, I'm, I'm sorry, it sounds like it's a CYA policy.
Idaho's. It does.
See, I, it looks to me like it's, they're, they're, they're trying to chill student speakers from doing anything religious at the ceremony. Like, that's what it looks like to me. Some kind of test, some kind of chilling effect.
And this is the duties of the, um. And this is the duties of the, um, school board trustees, so I don't know why. To exclude pupils, oh, that's infectious disease.
Which is a good reason to let somebody graduate.
Yeah, you know, that one, I can family that one, can we put that specific subsection seven?
Oh, maybe a person who disrupts the educational process?
Yep, I was just reading that. But a graduation ceremony isn't an educational process. But their presence could be detrimental to the morals, health, safety.
Do you, does the board go to graduations? Okay.
We could just hand out, well, no, we don't, well, yeah, we do. We could shake our hands when we have.
Oh.
Bring lots of hand sanitizer.
It's very sweet. Well, yeah, it's, and if you're me, you're like, why is your hands?
Cause I'm nervous, I'm walking across the stage. People staring at me.
Yeah, there's nothing in here about graduation, let's try this.
Try ceremony.
That was a good idea. Hey.
Nope.
Nope.
It's only one yes, to make sure we do something for. Okay. So, um, yeah, we could. Take that out. So there's no legal reference for this.
Okay, and then I S B A added that blue part in, we took part of that out.
Right. So the religious test and teaching in school. I don't understand why, I mean. The principal's approving whatever the student's stating. And. I don't understand. I mean.
Why the blue parts been added at all? Is that what you're wondering?
Well, no, I just, I don't understand why it's making such a huge to-do. I mean, this whole, students may be denied participation in graduation ceremonies. I do think we should state why they might be denied.
I think so, too. Especially cause if this goes out for parent comment, I feel like parents are gonna be like, say, whatever, adding this in cause of Kellogg, and they're, you know.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
Minimum.
Minimum.
Minimum credits.
Thank you.
I mean, I can understand, like.
Or you could say has not met graduation requirements, since there's more than just.
That's a good point.
Sorry, D, I didn't mean that.
Well, no, I was thinking, like, I can see if, like, a kid. Uh. And I don't know if this would be warranted, but, you know. A senior came in and as a senior prank decided to, like, spray paint the entire school. I could see that being denied.
Graduation.
Graduation.
Well, we could say, in the event a student has not met graduation requirements, or has violated.
School policy.
District policy, yeah, something like that.
Or district policy.
Violate district policy in a way that is relevant to graduation ceremonies, I don't know, cause what if you violate district policy in grade one by singing overly loudly in the hallway?
Yeah, or has.
Uh, or, I was thinking, maybe you could put like, or poses a hazard to the ceremony, or something like that, or.
But who determines what the hazard is?
I I agree, yeah, it's really hard to.
Yeah, you need the wrong people in charge and.
You're right, maybe we should just leave it at, in the event a student has not met the graduation requirements.
Yeah.
And then if we suspect somebody's gonna do bad things, have security there.
Well, no, what I'm thinking is, if a kid does that, then. It doesn't necessarily need to be happen in the, in the policy, because parents will be called and the prince will be like, he's, he's not, she's not going to graduation. Cause she decides to spray paint the whole entire school. She could spend her graduation ceremony trying to repaint over the spray paint, so like, something like that, cause that would be criminal behavior, vandalism.
Better press of accomplishment, that's a lot of square footage. Right.
Right.
Yeah, you could say in the case of criminal behavior or something.
Oh, yeah, under suspension or expulsion.
There you go.
Because then that means that they did something.
The pilots had a policy, yeah.
Then do we need has violated district policy if we said it was under, cause then that would cover the whole, like, more pertinent, like, recently violated district policy.
I agree. Yeah, period, yeah.
Right, not in ninth grade, you put gum on the seat or something.
Right, we remember.
And we never forget.
I'm getting tired, I'm sorry.
We've got four minutes, or three minutes, okay, so in the event a student has not met the graduation requirements, or is under suspension or expulsion. The student may be denied participation in graduation ceremony.
And it's clear.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Graduation ceremony. Cause there's only one.
Well, do they have any other type of activities around graduation, like I said?
Well, they have the, usually the graduation night of, you go to triple play, and they're there all night long.
Oh, yeah, that's right, but this is commencement, so.
Correct.
Just something like commencement. They get to go to triple play all night long? That's so cool.
Yeah.
My kid wishes he could do that. Could spend the whole time in the, like, mining place.
Okay, he will grow up and start playing video games and stuff.
If I let him, he will.
Oh.
Playing video games, not the grown up.
Or kill, kill zombies or werewolves that my daughter loves to do.
Okay. Okay, does that sound okay?
Yes.
Oh, it looks great.
I'm changing it, because we start the paragraph with, off with in the event.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that's it.
Sure.
All good.
You were right.
Three guns. Was it three?
Well, if you count the twenty-seven, her P and twenty-seven, her, that's four.
It's four.
So you did four, awesome.
I was gonna say, didn't we do four?
We are good, so good. Uh, so you all know, we. Are meeting Friday, should any of you want to participate, uh, from one to four. To try and get through the annual policies that the board is required to review before they start school.
Okay.
Cause there's no other way to do it.
Yeah.
Right.
So if you wanna come, great, if you don't, totally respect that.
So are we, what policies are we reviewing?
Do you wanna show them the list?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to stop this recording?
Oh, yeah, let's go ahead and stop recording, cause we're out of time.